Good evening, everyone. It is six oh one and I call this regular school board meeting to order. Dr. Salazar, Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Trevino, members of the Board, in honor of Veterans Day, we have our Navy Junior ROTC presenting the colors today. They are under the direction of Chief Casey.
Left turn, march. Three, set, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the death of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Would everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated.
Green, color. Right, green, color, right. Pink. Ford. March.
Mr. Castillo, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson.
Present.
I am here, Martin Castillo.
Mr. Jesús Amaya.
Present.
Ms. Sandra García.
Present.
Ms. Letizia Quintero.
Present.
Mr. Kevin Montes.
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar.
Present.
Ms. Elizabeth Neely.
Present.
Thank you. Moving on to Roman numer number five, district presentations, we have Los Fresnos High School College Board National Recognition Program. And then number two, A B C D Award Above and Beyond the Call of Duty. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the Board, each time we come together for a regular meeting, we set time aside to celebrate the accomplishments of our students and the achievement of our students and the accomplishments of our teachers. Here to present advanced placement scholar awards is our Director of Advanced Academics, Ms. Grenier.
Dr. Salazar, Mr. President and members of the Board, thank you for providing me the opportunity to discuss the outstanding accomplishments our AP students have earned this past school year. What you see on our presentation is you have our AP Scholar. Criteria for this particular scholar is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. We have our AP Scholar with Honors, which is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. AP Scholar with Distinction are granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Our results for the past few years, we had this 2024 school year, twenty-five scholars. Scholars with honors thirteen and scholars with distinction twelve, for a total of fifty. We definitely advanced on this. Our National Recognition Program. Eligibility criteria for National Recognition Programs are for students who can submit in the tenth and eleventh grade based on, if they take the fall 2023 PSAT NMSQT tenth or eleventh, or spring PSAT tenth, and score in the top ten percent of test takers from their award program in their state, or earn a three or higher on two or more distinct AP exams in the ninth and/or tenth grade, and earn cumulatives GPA of B plus or higher, at least three point three or an eighty-seven to eighty-nine percent by the time of submission, and identify as first generation, black or African American, Hispanic or Latino, indigenous or native, and/or attend school in a rural area or small town. This is where it gets great. Our college board numbers are for the far right for this past school year, but we get the information in July. So our Hispanic, we had fifty-five students who received this recognition. Fifty-two were first generation Hispanic, two first generation Hispanic and rural, two rural, two Hispanic, sorry, two rural, four Hispanic rural, fourteen first generation, one first generation rural, and one Hispanic indigenous, for a total of one hundred and thirty-one students who earned this NRP reward.
And they're all gonna come in in a minute. No.
Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Grenier.
Thank you so much. Those numbers are great numbers and we really appreciate all the hard work that our teachers are putting in and our students are putting in to get us to this point. Congratulations.
Mr. Trevino, members of the Board, we also have another award. We take the time to recognize at our meetings, staff members who go above and beyond the call of duty. And here to introduce you to one such staff member is the proud principal of Los Fresnos Elementary, Ms. Grimaldo.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the Board, Dr. Salazar. It is my great pleasure to present this Above and Beyond the Call of Duty Award to a truly exceptional educator, Mrs. Evelyn Hernandez. Seated right over there. Mrs. Hernandez, you are a shining example of what it means to be a dedicated and compassionate teacher. Within the four walls of our school building, you have a unique ability to connect with young children, especially those with special needs. Thank you. You create a warm and nurturing environment where your students feel safe and supported. Your patience, understanding, and unwavering commitment to their growth are truly inspiring. Outside the walls of our school building is what truly amazes me and warms my heart, and to be honest, brings tears to my eyes. I'm blessed to work with you because of who you are. You go above and beyond the call of duty every day, but I know there are many, many examples of things that you do that are after hours and beyond the call of duty. For example, a sweet sixteen for the sibling of one of her students. Mrs. Hernandez knew that this was a special day for this young lady and knew that the mom would need to be busy with making the day special for her daughter. So Teacher Evelyn was a guest at this sweet sixteen so that she could watch her student while that mom could enjoy the special day. Another example, a mama in distress. She's caught in the parking lot at Target in Brownsville. Her daughter is autistic and it's hard for her daughter to understand that she cannot walk out of the whole, out of Target with the whole toy department. She begins to hit and throw a tantrum and mom quickly gets her in the car so that she doesn't run in the parking lot. A passerby calls the police on this mom because they think that this mama is abusing her daughter. So the police arrive and this mom is in tears, needing assistance. The police quickly see that, what is really happening, and ask if there is somebody she can call for help. This mama doesn't have family in Brownsville and the next best person she knew to call was Teacher Evelyn. Mrs. Hernandez is at Target within five minutes to help, and she does. You see, we don't always understand the needs of our students, that the needs of our students that have special needs, but we also don't understand the needs of those parents. Mrs. Hernandez does. She is that voice that helps parents sleep better at night after they've had a bad day. She often reaches out with a text or a phone call to let her parents know that what they are doing is, is working. Mrs. Hernandez makes numerous house calls, sometimes in person, but often by phone. She reads bedtime stories to her students. She makes time for FaceTime during the summer so her students don't forget their teacher. I could go on and on with these stories and examples about Mrs. Hernandez, but I can't keep y'all here all night. I do know that she is very deserving of this A B C D award and I'm beyond proud to recognize her for her passion and big heart. Your impact on students extends far beyond the classroom. You have a profound influence on their lives, helping them develop the skills and confidence they need to succeed. You are a role model for all of us and we are grateful for your dedication to our youngest learners and you exemplify what it means to serve others.
There's more.
There's some of her babies.
Thank you.
That's a great story. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, for your hard work and tireless work, especially for our most neediest and special, special, specially gifted children. And so we really do appreciate all you do for us.
Also, Mr. President, I also got teary eyed. I'm very sentimental and it hit me in the heart. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving along, we have public audience. I'm a little teary eyed myself, so excuse my, my voice. Let me try to compose myself here. So we have somebody signed up for public audience, Eva Pérez, CIS, Do the Right Thing. It is on the agenda item, it is checked no. Oh, I got you. I got you. So this item is not on the agenda. I do wanna read a, a public audience excerpt that we must read by law. If you wish to address the Board of Trustees during an open forum or public comment portion of today's meeting, please print your name below, which you've done. According to the Los Fresnos CISD policy, BED local, only those persons on this list who request to speak prior to meeting starting shall be heard. The speaker shall limit remarks to five minutes. The Board shall allot no more than thirty minutes for open forum portion at district regular board meetings, held once a month for items not on the meeting agenda. The time limit per speaker may be adjusted due to time restraints and the amount of speakers signing up. As appropriate, complaints and concerns for which other resolution channels are provided shall be directed through those channels. These complaints include complaints on the following subjects: employee complaints, termination of employment, career ladder, appeals, student complaints, removal to alternative education program and expulsion. If the Board President determines that a person has not attempted to resolve a matter administratively, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy for attempted resolution before bringing the matter to the Board. Complaints against specific employees or officers of the Los Fresnos CISD shall be heard in closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code Title V, Section 551.074, 1 and 2. If your topic concerns complaints against specific employees or officers, please note this on the sign up sheet and that was not noted. So with that, Ms. Pérez, you have the floor. And Mr. Castillo, will you keep, and let's do five minutes, it's fine. Ms. Pérez.
Good evening, Dr. Salazar, Superintendent, Board President and Board Members. My name is Eva Pérez and I am the Executive Director for Communities and Schools of Cameron County. And today I wanna thank the Los Fresnos principal, the teachers, the students, and I will be talking to you and sharing, and it gives me great pleasure to be able to share one of the events that communities and school shares with the districts. And so it is called Do the Right Thing. It's a writing assignment that we allow our middle schools to participate. And the reason we're here is because we wanted to recognize one of your students, seventh grader Scarlett Galloway. She was the recipient of last year and so she was one of the finalists. And I wanted to give you a little orientation as to what Do the Right Thing is. It's a writing challenge that we give our opportunity to our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And so it's not mandated, it's an opportunity anyone in those grades, if they want to participate. And so every year, we offer this to all of our middle schools from the five districts that we're in. And so today, we wanted to recognize what, what does Do the Right Thing mean? It's a writing assignment that is given to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And each student decides how they wanna address the issue with violence. It could be because of bullying, it could be domestic violence, or it could be just any violence that they have been exposed to in their environment, in the schools, in the whole settings. And so what Do the Right Thing is a partnership with communities and schools. And it's, it's an initiative aimed to empower our students to voice their experience and insight of how violence impacts their lives. And each year, this collaboration between our local students with a life-changing opportunity to travel to Washington DC so they can meet other students that have been going through the same thing that they have at their state. Where they are recognized for their essay addressing violence prevention, advocating for safety, communities, funded generously by Kuwait American Foundation. The trip highlights the student's dedication and gives them a national platform to share their powerful message. On a local level, communities and schools host a formal ceremony honoring all finalists, celebrating their courage and commitment to a positive change within the community. This program not only recognizes exceptional young voices, but also encourages a proactive stand against violence, inspiring students to be leaders and advocate in the schools and in their neighborhoods. Through this partnership, community schools remain dedicated to supporting our youth development and fostering environments where students can thrive without the threat of violence. This year, we have the privilege of taking Scarlett Galloway, a seventh grader, now an eighth grader, from Los Cuates Middle School, along with her dedicated teacher, Anna Ortiz, representing Los Fresnos CISD to Washington DC. We are deeply grateful for the Los Fresnos CISD Administration, Family Engagement Department, Principals and Staff for the commitment to support each year this program, which helps make the impact experience possible for our students. Together, we can continue to inspire young voices to advocate for positive changes and stand against violence in our communities and schools. Thank you. Today, I also have books. We requested books so that each Board Member can go ahead and have a copy of the book. This book entitles all the essays that are written for Do the Right Thing throughout the United States for the states that, that participate. These books are filed in the United States Library of Congress. So on page, if you open up your books, we have Ms. Scarlett's essay on page fifty-five. And this is done, the trip that is taken to Washington DC, we take this student, the parent, one of the parents, and they get exposed not just to being with other students that have the same dream and the same voice as far as against violence, but they get to see, they get to visit Washington, all the historical site. This is a trip that has been paid. It doesn't cost the parent or the student or the teacher anything. It is one hundred percent provided by CIS and the Kuwait Foundation. But it's a great honor just to know that the student's essay is filed in the US Library of Congress. And I just thought that today, since we had our books, we wanted to present them to each one of the Board Members just to let you know that it is a privilege and honor for us to represent Los Fresnos CISD in Washington DC through Ms. Scarlett Galloway and her mother. And so I thank you for allowing us to be able to partner up in this writing assignment through your middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pérez, for informing us of that. What an honor and what an experience for Ms. Galloway and congratulations to her too. Thank you so much, ma'am. Moving ahead with the agenda for tonight's meeting, public comment, no public comment, district recognitions, a recognition of Board President, Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, I think this time I'm calling on our Vice President, Mr. Donald Henderson, for the recognition of our Board President.
I'm gonna give you back just a little bit so we can talk to the audience. President Trevino, would you come down here with me tonight? This is about you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a very special evening for our district. As the Vice President of the Los Fresnos CISD Board of Trustees, it is my privilege to say a few words about our friend, our trustee, our Board President, Ruben Trevino. The title of my comments tonight is Dig Deep and Build Higher. The work our teachers, staff, and Board does every day helps students have deep foundations for a life that they will build on to be successful in their careers and as citizens. I would like to ask Ruben's family, I don't know if Kim was able to make it in.
Don't see her, don't see her.
I'd like to acknowledge Kim and Hope. We know that they do a lot, Kayla, but I know she's at the Law Office, will not able to make it tonight. But they do a lot because they know how many hours go into helping here at the school district. So let me give a round of applause to his family. Ruben has worked with trustees across the district to advocate for public education. He puts in a lot of extra time in meetings on various committees and with Dr. Salazar. The motto of our district is what we do here changes the world. Thomas Jefferson was an ardent advocate for public education. His work contributed to the creation of a secular university, University of Virginia. He is credited as saying, "An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for survival of the free people." The work our teachers and staff do every day is making a difference in students' lives and preparing them for the challenges that lay ahead. The story of the three bricklayers is a parable with many different variations. After the great fire of sixteen sixty-six, which leveled London, the world's renowned architect, Christopher Wren, was commissioned to rebuild St. Paul's Cathedral. Dr. Salazar has shared with many of us this parable and I'd like to ask Gabriela Hernandez, a sophomore at LFU, to come forward and share that with us. Gabriela?
One day in sixteen seventy-one, Christopher Wren observed three bricklayers on a scaffold, one crouched, one half-standing, and one standing tall, working very hard and fast. To the first bricklayer, Christopher Wren asked the question, "What are you doing?" To which the bricklayer replied, "I'm a bricklayer. I'm working, I'm working hard laying bricks to feed my family." The second bricklayer responded, "I'm a builder. I'm building a wall." But the third bricklayer, the most productive of the three and the future leader of the group, when asked the question, "What are you doing?", replied with a gleam in his eye, "I'm a cathedral builder. I'm building a great cathedral to the Almighty." Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Trevino.
Thank you, Gabriela. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Gabriela, for reading that very, very good story tonight. The story shows us the power of purpose. For the first bricklayer, building the wall was a job. For the second, it was an occupation, but for the third, it was a calling. Ruben, I see that calling in your leadership. You've helped maintain the team of eights through many tough decisions. You lead, you lead the initiative after the tragic event Ayuvalde to strengthen our school's safety for our students and for our staff. Secondly, you've taught me the value of building our mental health awareness. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I would like to present you this gavel in recognition of your service.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Nobody gets to tell anybody that I'm a big crybaby, crybaby. But thank you, Don, for those words. Really appreciate that. I am honored, as always, every time I come before you all, to say that it is a privilege and an honor to serve alongside these Board Members. We hold very high standards for ourselves and our district and we work really, really hard to make sure that our students have the very best that we can afford so that they can shine and shine brightly. As you see the numbers, we do very, very well across the state and we continue to surpass the state in many areas. And so that is due to the tireless work that our teachers and our administrators do in our, in our executive committee. So I just wanna thank everybody. This is not a one-person deal. It is, everybody has the same type of commitment and expectation and we strive for excellence. And I just wanna thank everybody that has continued to support us. I wanna thank the Board for entrusting me to lead and it is a privilege and an honor, once again, to come before you and say thank you. Thank you. All right. The next item we have on our agenda, election results, certificates of the election and oath of office, and two, reorganization of board election of officers. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the Board, you will recall that we recently canceled the election. The Board called the election and when our incumbents had no opposition, we canceled the election. So tonight, we set out to administer the certificates of election and oath of office and then we'll follow that with reorganization of the Board. We're going to follow, we have positions five, six, and We're going to follow, we have positions five, six, and seven, and so, we'll follow that order for the certificates of election and oath of office. So, at this time, we are calling on Mr. Donald Henderson to please come up. I believe we also are welcoming Judge Estella Vazquez this evening. Judge, welcome to Los Fresnos. Welcome. Come on up right there. Coming up. Here you go, sir. Let me take that with you.
If I can have the husband, the wife, Ms. Harriet Isabel Henderson join her husband up here, and Don Andrew Henderson.
If it's okay, can I move this? It's up there.
Will you raise your right hand? And repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, Donald Stephen Henderson-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute the duties-
Execute the duties-
Of the Office of-
Of the Office of-
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position number five.
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, place five.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Preserve-
Protect-
Protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
The Constitution-
And laws-
And laws-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
My investment is finally at work.
I'll, I'll, I'll be honest with you. Three, two.
Thank you.
I should call Mrs. Isabel Garcia, position six.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, execute the-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute the duties-
Execute the duties-
Of the Office of-
Of the Office of-
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position number six.
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, trustee, position number six.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Preserve-
Protect-
Protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
The Constitution-
And laws-
And laws-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we call our justice of the peace, Mr. Juan Mendoza, to step forward, and Ms. Letizia Quintero.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, execute the-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute the duties-
Execute the duties-
Of the Office of-
Of the Office of-
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position number six.
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, trustee, position number six.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Preserve-
Protect-
Protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
The Constitution-
And laws-
And laws-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we call our justice of the peace, Mr. Juan Mendoza, to step forward, and Ms. Letizia Quintero.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, execute the-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
Or affirm-
Or affirm-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute-
Execute-
The duties-
The duties-
Of the Office-
Of the Office-
With the Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position seven.
With the Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, position number seven.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Reserve-
And protect-
And protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
And the Constitution-
And the laws-
And the laws-
Of, of our ability to preserve-
Preserve-
Protect-
Protect-
And defend-
And defend-
Constitution-
Constitution-
And the laws of the United States, of this state.
So help me God. So help me God.
At this time, we call our justice of the peace, Mr. Juan Mendoza, to step forward, and Ms. Letizia Quintero.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, execute the-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
Or affirm-
Or affirm-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute the duties-
Execute the duties-
Of the Office of-
Of the Office of-
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position seven.
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, trustee, position number six.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Preserve-
And protect-
And protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
The Constitution-
And laws-
And laws-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we call our justice of the peace, Mr. Juan Mendoza, to step forward, and Ms. Letizia Quintero.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, execute the-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
Or affirm-
Or affirm-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute the duties-
Execute the duties-
Of the Office of-
Of the Office of-
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position seven.
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, trustee, position number six.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Reserve-
And protect-
And protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
And the Constitution-
And the laws-
And the laws-
Of, of our ability to preserve-
Preserve-
Protect-
And defend-
Constitution-
Constitution-
And the laws of the United States, of this state.
So help me God. So help me God.
At this time, we call our justice of the peace, Mr. Juan Mendoza, to step forward, and Ms. Letizia Quintero.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I-
I, execute the-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
Or affirm-
Or affirm-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Execute the duties-
Execute the duties-
Of the Office of-
Of the Office of-
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District Trustee, position seven.
Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District, position number seven.
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve-
Reserve-
And protect-
And protect-
And defend-
And defend-
The Constitution-
And the laws-
And the laws- Of, of our ability to preserve-
Preserve-
Protect-
And defend-
And defend-
Constitution-
Constitution-
And the laws of the United States, of this state. So help me God. So help me God.
At this time, we call our justice of the peace, Mr. Juan Mendoza, to step forward, and Ms. Letizia Quintero. Item number two, reorganization of, of board election of officers. With this, uh, we are going to be, um, accepting nominations for the board positions of president, vice president, and secretary. Um, at this point, I'm gonna open it up for nominations for president. Mr. Montes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Donald Henderson for president, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Mr. Henderson is, uh, nominated for president. Ms. Garcia?
Second.
Thank you. So, we've got a first and a second. All those in favor of Donald Henderson becoming the next president of LFC ISD board, uh, please, well, it, it, it's kinda like a, a deal, you have to, once, once we've got a first and a second, like, you gotta do it. But, I mean, it's up to you. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. With that acceptance, all those in favor of Donald Henderson becoming the next, uh, board president of LFC ISD, please raise your hand. You can. There you go. And it's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to vice president. I'm opening it up for nominations. Yes, Mr. Henderson?
For the Office of Vice President, I would like to nominate Mr. Martin Castillo.
Martin Castillo has been nominated for vice president. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya? We've got a first and a second. Mr. Castillo, will you accept the nomination?
I'll be more than happy to, sir.
Thank you, sir. With that said, all those in favor of, uh, electing Martin Castillo to the Office of Vice President, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Congratulations, Mrs. Quintero. Next officer we're going to nominate and elect is for secretary. Do I have any nominations? Ms. Garcia?
I'll nominate Mr. Jesus Amaya.
Excellent. Jesus Amaya has been nominated for secretary. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo seconds it. Uh, Mr. Amaya, will you accept the nomination? With that said, all those in favor of having Jesus Amaya be the next board secretary, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, sir. Congratulations. Thank you. The board is now reorganized. The next item on the agenda, we're, sorry, you have something? Oh, assistant, that is correct. Next seat is assistant secretary. With that said, I'll open it up for any nominations. Any nominations? I wanna, I, I can nominate. Oh, who do we have? Don? Mr. Henderson?
I would do.
Okay. I, I nominate Leti Quintero as assistant, uh, secretary. Any other nominations? Ms. Garcia, will you second that?
I'll second.
Excellent. So, we've got a first and a second. Uh, Ms. Quintero, will you accept the nomination of assistant secretary?
Yes, Mr. President, I accept.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. With that said, all those in favor of, uh, nominating, uh, Letizia Quintero for the role of assistant secretary, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Quintero. All right, ma'am, Ms. Quintero. Congratulations. Now, uh, Mr. Henderson, you wanted to say a few words? Yes, sir?
When I was sworn in, uh, I kinda forgot to say thank you, uh, and I think it's important because it is a huge responsibility that we take when we decide to become public servants. So, I did write down a few brief words, and I think it's the enduring vision. Um, when we were at a trip to Chicago this summer, I was impressed by, uh, by a gentleman who gave us a guided tour, and I know I've shared this story with our fellow board trustees, uh, about how you can really make an impact when you have a purpose. The Chicago architect, Daniel Vernon, said as he spoke to the business leaders and shared his dream to build back Chicago after the Great Fire. Make no little plans. They have no magic to stir men's blood and probably will not themselves be realized. Make big plans. Aim high in hope and work, remembering that a noble logical diagram once recorded will never die. But long after we are gone, we'll be living, seeing, asserting itself with ever-growing intensity. I appreciate the opportunity to serve a second term on the board. The position carries a tremendous amount of responsibility. I thank Coach Garza, who, uh, helped place five for many years for his counsel. I also thank my wife Isabel for supporting my work and the time that it requires. My daughter Valeria and son John Andrew, and my parents, Jack and Ivedine. My daily prayers for God to give our board wisdom. We are public servants, not rulers, and we must never forget that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. And with that, we will recess and then reconvene.
Okay, we're gonna return to open session. The time is 7:04. Uh, Dr. Salazar, item number 11, district reports. One, finance reports. A, portfolio reports. B, tax collection reports. C, summary revenue and expenditures. D, monthly disbursements. E, budget adjustments. And F, capital projects.
Mr. Henderson, first of the board. This evening, we present our monthly, uh, financial reports, and because it's his birthday, we're gonna ask our CFO, Mr. Basaldura, to-
Happy birthday, sir.
Some highlights. Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Thank you so much. Um, again, the main takeaway, really, these are board reports for the period, for the new period, which it's gonna be for September 30th of 2024. If, if we look at our tax collection report, we are, we are seeing a bit of a difference as far as we are ahead in comparison to last year by 1.4, 4.6%. And really, the main takeaway, like I expressed to Dr. Salazar, is any taxpayer who's trying to pay early to take advantage of the 3%, some taxpayers paid early in September, and we also see a significant difference next month in October, where we had additional revenue, again, of any taxpayer trying to take advantage of the 3% or 2% or 1% discount. Uh, the other main takeaway, the, the difference as far as in the summary reports, on summary of revenue and expenditure status report, we did add a one-page summary report, so the detail is still there that we've always conveyed in the past, and all we did was we just added one, in essence, summary report that includes the total revenues and total expenditures, and it conveys the difference between outstanding expenditures and actual. So, if you do look at that budget report of 130 million, right next to it, the second column being any outstanding encumbrances, and like I expressed to Dr. Salazar, it is a significant number of 73 million, but it's because we encumber salaries as a whole for the entire year. So, it includes, again, all teacher salaries, all district staff salaries. So, that's in essence why we have that outstanding encumbrance. And then the third column being the expenditure column. So, month after month, you will, you will see within that district report where, you know, the number of expenditure, of outstanding encumbrances may go down, but the expenditure column will be going up year after year, I mean, month after month. And then, of course, the capital projects report, it is very similar to last month. We are carrying over, um, the bond money and the local capital projects. We are at 2.8 million in the bond money, and then in our local capital projects, we
for fiscal year 2024-2025. Have a motion on that item. Mr. Montes, have a-
Motion to approve, sir.
Motion to approve by Mr. Montes. Do we have a second?
I'll second, sir.
We have a motion as second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Action item number two, discuss and take action to approve the agreement contracts for Cafeteria Furniture to Edu Source Corporation from inter-local purchasing cooperative. Do I have a motion? Ms. Quintero made a motion. I need a second. Mr. Montes? I have a first and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of approving action item number two? Please raise your hand. Motion's unanimous. Thank you. Item, action item 13.3, discuss and take action to approve the agreements contracts for the Cisco Call Manager upgrade to NetSync. Do I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Quintero, we have a motion from Ms. Quintero.
Yes, I motion to approve action item number three.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item number three. Do we have a second? Mr. Montes? Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of approving item number three, discuss and take action to approve agreement contract for Cisco Call Manager upgrade to NetSync. Raise your hand. Okay, item passed. Item number 13.4, discuss and take action to award agreements contracts for CSP number 23-24-30, CTE renovations to Skagen's construction. Do I have a motion? Mr. Montes?
Motion to approve, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Montes. Do we have a second? Ms. Quintero? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Action item 13.5, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for 2024-2025 school year. A, teachers. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Trevino?
Mr. Henderson, I move that we approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2024-2025 school year. A, teachers.
Do we have a second? Ms. Garcia, thank you, a second. Any discussion? No discussion. We'll have a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Ms. Amaya said no one, Ms. Amaya, no one's present. Okay, we have the teacher for La Ziesca, Los Presnos Elementary, Almito, Los Presnos United. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda, item number 14, closed session. Dr. Salazar? Okay, open session, number 15, no need to discuss. Announcements, Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Henderson, members of the Board, on the week of Monday, November 25th through Friday, November 29th, we'll suspend normal operations for the Thanksgiving holiday. On Monday, December 9th, we have a regular school board meeting scheduled for 6:00 p.m. here. And the bi-district football game, the football playoff, the Falcons against Edinburgh Economies. That game takes place on Friday, November 15th at 7:00 p.m. Those are all the announcements we have, and I've already- Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Basaldua. Little birdie told me that it was your birthday today, and so I was supposed to announce that, and I was beaten to the punch. But I wanted on the record, I did say happy birthday, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Happy birthday, Mr. Basaldua. If there are no further items, the meeting is adjourned.